The October 5th, 2015 regularly scheduled meeting of the Robertson County School Board will now come to order. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices and join me in a moment of silence. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and just with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We are delighted. I told them a while ago, they have substitute teachers before. Well, tonight I am substitute student services director. We have tonight fourth and fifth graders from Whitehouse Heritage Elementary, and they're going to tell you their names and what grade they are in.
Hi, I'm Tori York.
I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Abby Ballard, and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Ally Ballard, and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Jacob Bona, and I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Delaney Barfield, and I'm in fifth grade.
Now, I warned them, they're going to have to turn around and give it again. So let's turn around, face it out, and this time I'll give you certificates.
Okay. Hello, I'm Tori York, and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Abby Ballard, and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Ally Ballard, and I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Jacob Bona, and I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Delaney Barfield, and I'm in fifth grade.
I hope your certificate's in there. Thank you all very, very much. I appreciate it all.
Mr. Davis, would you please bring our mission and vision statements?
Students, their achievement must be the focus of our every meeting, our every plan, and our every decision. The mission and vision statements of the Robertson County school system are the expressions of what we believe and what we expect. We believe our mission is to ensure each student is prepared to succeed in life. Our vision is that Robertson County schools will enable all students to reach and exceed high academic and career standards while empowering them to succeed in a technologically advanced and culturally diverse society.
Thank you. You have before you tonight a consent agenda. After you've looked at that, it's your pleasure.
Move to pass the consent agenda, please.
Second.
Mr. Crockett has made a motion, Mr. Payne second. Any discussion on consent agenda? All those in favor of approval make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes six zero. I'm assuming since Ms... Do you have something instead of Ms. Doris? Or we have nothing? Okay. Okay. We'll move on to Ms. Neaton Fields with RCAM. Okay. We'll move on to our personnel report.
That was fast. That was fast for me. On the certified side of the House, we had a total of sixteen personnel actions, two leave of absence, three resignations, one retirement, three transfers, one part-time contract, and one separation, and five new hires. That's on the certified. On the classified support staff, we had a total of eighty personnel actions, two leave of absences, eight resignations, seven transfers, and sixty-three hires. A lot of those are substitute teachers. Subject to your question, Madam Chairman, that completes the report.
Any questions on that report? If not, we'll move on to our expense comparison report.
The expense comparison report for August is as follows. Last year, we had collected $6,388,466.08 in revenues. This year, we have collected $6,671,478.58. We have collected just a little bit, a shade above where we were last year. Last year, we were at 7.4... 7 percent. This year, we're at 7.5 percent. Expenditures, we are at 11.86 percent of our budget as of August 31st last year. This year, we're at 11.58, just a shade under what we were at this time last year. Property tax has not yet started to come in, as this is August, and the budget was just passed in August. But sales tax is up a little bit. Last year, we had $863,451.98. This year, we have $944,139.39. We are at 8.99 percent of the budget collected at this point, as opposed to 9.59 percent this time last year. Electricity, as y'all know, August was a very hot month. Last year, we had spent about 14.44 percent of our budget on electricity. This year, we have spent 15.82 percent of the money allocated for electricity. Diesel fuel is quite the opposite. Last year, we have spent 8.98 percent of our diesel budget. This year, we've only spent 5.99 percent. Gasoline, last year, we have spent 30.5 percent, a 500th of a percent, and this year, we have only spent 12.14 percent. The insurance, of course, is already paid, and we are about the same budget, or this time last year, at 15 percent. Subject to your questions, Madam Chairman.
Any questions on expense comparison reports?
Yeah, we've been field prices.
That's what... That's probably what's reflected in there, is fuel prices are lower this August than they were last August.
You got a new school that will also...
Yeah.
Okay. We'll move on to approval of school support organizations.
The school support organizations are in your mind, or these are athletic clubs for the most part, and so I would recommend approval.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion to approve by Mr. White is second by Mr. Hurd. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approval make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes six zero. Okay, we'll move on to transportation and facilities, and approval to hire Kat Spinkley-Jones... Oh, I'm sorry, we're not... We're moving to board policies. I am so sorry. I was going to get this meeting done quickly. We're taking right along here, okay?
I will not hold you up.
Okay.
We're at second reading tonight. A couple of board policies regarding leave, sick leave, personal leave, and professional leave, bringing it in line with the recently signed MOU. Policy 5.312 has one addition, adding personal leave transferring to sick leave, and policy revision 5.313 allocates the days by years experience for personal professional leave, and changes from three days notice for personal leave to one day.
We have a motion for approval in second reading?
Yes, Madam Chairman. A motion for approval, and if you don't mind, I'd like to take both, since it's on second reading. 5.312 and 5.313.
Motion by Mr. Crockett is second by Mr. White. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving any second reading, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we will move to approval to hire Kat Spinkley-Jones and Morris to develop plans and specifications for renovation of Springfield Middle School auditorium and Springfield High School athletic facility.
Madam Chairman, I'm asking if you'd approve a contract with Kat Spinkley-Jones and Morris for purposes as listed there, Springfield Middle School auditorium renovation, and the development of a high school football complex on property that's been donated by a citizen of Robertson County. And professional services is what this is a contract for. What will happen, once they develop the plans based on our guidance, as to what we expect them to put into that project, each of those projects, they will come back, and you can approve those plans, or you can decline to approve those plans, whichever you choose. But if you approve them, then we would put them out for bid, companies would bid on them, and then they'd come back to give your consideration. Then we would have to go to the county commission to request the funding to actually complete those projects, and that's the way the process would work. So, any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Mr. John, Mr. Morris was here earlier.
I was going to say, have we checked with any other companies to say it possibly?
We have not done an RFP for professional services. You don't have to do that. This is the company that we have used, or what you all have used for quite some time. They have all of the documents associated with our current buildings over there, in both the middle school and the high school, or other companies probably do not have them. They have it digitized. So it's up to you, if you want to go out and do an RFP, or somebody could do that. They'd have to come in, submit a proposal, and you could choose from another firm, or if you want to continue to use, maybe JN, who might recommend it. It's up to the board.
And it's my understanding, they're just going to draw the plans out without a scope of work or anything, just how they want it done, how you want it done?
No, no, no. The scope of work, they will work with me, and we'll bring it back to the board. They'll... What they will do, Mr. White, is they'll come back with a first draft for you to look at, sort of like we did when we did Watauga, and you'll say, well, I want to cut this down or add this in, or whatever the board chooses to do at that time. The final plans will come back, and if you've had an opportunity to review and make recommendations for the plans they bring back to you. Is there any way that before they go doing the scope of work, that we can just tell them what we're wanting to do in this, to start with, in phases, or whatever? Well, they don't have a lot of money to work with, really, because it's going to be a very limited scope, of course, and they know that going forward. But you, again, will get to see the draft plans before they're ever approved. They'll come back to a work session, present those to the board, and then the board can say, well, I'd like for you to add something in the scope of work, or take something out of the scope of work that you're proposing. You just don't use the approval on the first blush. And I understand they're aware of what's our building plans and stuff at Springfield Middle School. I understand that we're going in to build an athletic facility. That's a whole new, fresh start. I don't know what they would have to be working with right off to get there. I understand they've got the insight to Springfield Middle School as far as building athletic facility. I'd like to see some other competition. They have built other athletic facilities. Right, but I'm talking about inside of Robertson County. I'd like to see some competition, trying to keep everybody honest.
Yeah, I don't know. I know when we did heritage, like the school, they did give us plans for the athletic fields, which were eventually cut out, but we used those, we've been using those plans as we build things at the school. But that's the only experience I have with them as far as those plans. I mean, they still use those plans when they built the concession stand, they use those plans that they had came up with as far as like where it went and what to do with it, but I don't remember anything much other than that.
What I have shared with Mr. Morris is that what we're looking for in this first, someone said phase of construction is, they'll have to construct a field that can be used for athletic contests that are sanctioned by the Tennessee High School Athletic Association, and you also will have to have, or required to have, handicap facilities on the premises where people can easily access the athletic complex. In other words, you have to have parking back there for them, you have to have restrooms and that kind of thing, but nothing else at this point. And then other stuff, it's going to be laid out in such a way that in the future, if this board, or some future board, or some group wants to get together and add to it, they could, just much like what you said. It's not, it's going to be a bare bones approach, because there's just not enough funds there to do a whole lot more, other than build a football complex or field, and double as a soccer field. I'd, you know, I'd love to see you be able to do complete field hubs, and do parking facilities, and a track and all that, but that's just not feasible with the amount of money you have.
What sort of do we have?
Well, the county commission set aside four cents of property tax increase for debt service, and that's what we're talking about. That four cents would be bonding. A penny today brings in about $233,000 per penny. If you bond that over 20 years, you can multiply that times 10, and that's about what you've got to work with.
So how much do we have?
About, my estimate, based on today's current interest rates, a close 500, 5 million, 5 million, for both projects.
Both projects?
Yes.
And what do we think Springfield Middle's going to take?
Springfield Middle is going to be most likely more expensive, because you've got some payout that you're going to have to do, you know, demolish some parts of a building that are in place. There may be some abatement that has to be, has to take place, so it's going to be the most expensive of the day.
All of that money, is there any, is there any of that money set aside for funding or to assist in these other communities that have money tied up on their own?
Not all of that money. I think the finance director did talk with the comptroller's office, and they told him that money, you cannot do that. They set that money aside just to address the paragraph in the agreement with the Department of Justice, that we agreed that we would do this going forward. And that's, that's what that money is earmarked for, and cannot be spent now. There's other monies that they possibly could do that out of debt service, I don't know. It's something the finance department should enlighten you on.
Did they say it's only, that money's only available for?
It's only available for those two projects.
I mean...
There's a resolution that was actually adopted after the tax increase was passed. That states that.
It's going to be hard to come to. This community, the communities put their money, have got a lot of money out there. Every community in this county does. And they're going to have to have some help somehow when we get down to it. I know that's what we're talking about.
There may be a way to do that.
I understand, I understand. I always want to keep that on tape, that we are looking at that, we have to.
I'd like to go back to the idea that we talked about a while back, about bringing all of the facilities back under the school umbrella, the school system umbrella.
Yes.
And, you know, we talked about that before, and I've kind of advocated that all along. And, you know, there may be other sources of funding besides this one particular four cent line item that's in the budget that would be able to do that, but I would envision a time where we had a, you know, each cluster having sort of an order of merit, you know, as to which facilities need the most work, which ones need ADA type work first, things of that nature, and trying to somehow get a lot of those parents off in notes and things like that that are on as well. Yeah, I don't know if this is a time to talk about it, but at some point, it'd be great to form some sort of exploratory committee, where you have one or two people from each athletic association within the county come together with some of, you know, some other members to try to figure out a way forward on that, if that's what we decided we wanted to do.
We're currently having an engineer firm, Joel Hader, to do that for three of our schools, Cooperstown Middle, East Robertson High School, and Springfield. Your facilities must be ADA compliant. And I don't care who builds them, if the booster club builds them, or whomever, we are liable for that.
Well, I guess we just, we need sort of an order of merit list of some sort, you know, which, because in the future, there's going to be limited amounts of money to prepare these facilities, and we kind of need to look at the ones and see, all right, what's the most immediate needs, you know, some of the, some of the older facilities, and how do we get, how do we get parents off in notes, and how do we make sure that we've got title, is it title nine requirements, is that what it is? How do we meet the, how do we meet the ADA type things? Things that ultimately will be responsible for, but so far have sort of just not stepped up to the plate and accepted that responsibility because of the historical precedents that have been set, that says, you know, we're not going to build athletic facilities, we're not going to maintain athletic facilities. I would propose that that's an idea of the past, and that with the liability and everything else, that we can't afford not to do that.
And let me add one thing, Mr. Hurd, that you made a good point there, some local folks working on this. The architect will only draw the plans, they are not doing the civil engineering in either one of these. That's going to be a separate item that we will deal with, and I've had a conversation with a young man here who has offered his services on a as-need basis, if we want to enter into a contract with him to do that, and he is, in fact, a civil engineer. And that's somebody else that we would have, especially on the athletic fields, that we would have to engage.
I guess while I'm rambling roll a little bit, I'm okay with Kat Spinkley doing it. I mean, I don't know, everything they've done in the past for us, I've been satisfied with, you know? I don't know why I want to change architects just for the sake of changing architects, unless there's some reason.
I guess I'd like to just see what they're charging.
Well, nobody works for free. I mean, yeah.
I understand, the sum work cheap or nothing.
Yeah, but are you willing to risk sometimes taking a known that you know is guaranteed versus an unknown for less money, and you might get what you pay for as well? That's what kind of scares me a little bit, too. You know, think about our long mulling stuff this year, you know?
And I don't want to jump, I'm going to ramble more than Jerry now that we're talking about ADA. At some point, could Mr. Fitch maybe tell us how many of our, if he's been able to go to all facilities? Have you done that? I've, no, I'll wait, I'll let him call you. We, we got something else on the table, but I would like to hear.
I can tell you what I've done on that.
Well, let's, let's take care of what's here before.
We don't have a motion on the floor, gentlemen.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we hire Kat Spinkley to do it. I don't have a problem.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made by Mr. Converse.
Can we do these two projects separately, or are they being done together?
I would rather you do one, one architect, but I can get work done.
No, I'm just saying, one architect, but the projects are separate, two separate.
Projects are separate, but yes, you can do it that way. But you want two motions, that's up to you.
No, I'm asking.
I would hope that they would, oh, go ahead, we have a motion in the second.
Yes, we do.
I would hope that, I mean, I don't want some architect just putting something on paper, I want him to go out and talk to the, to the football coach, and I want him to go to middle school and talk to Grant Bell, and to, you know, to see what they would like to see as far as how, how Grant would like the auditorium to look, and I want him to talk to Dustin Wilson, and some of the, and Teresa Levitt, and some of the people out there as well, so that he knows what, what they want to, to see. Okay? The other reason I don't have a problem with Kat Spinkley is, you know, over the years, we did this to Hewlett Spencer, too, but, but a lot of, because they got our business elsewhere, a lot of times, they did a lot of work that never got followed up on, and never got paid for anything addition or anything like that at all. You know, how many studies have they done for us over the years where they didn't get paid?
And the ones they're doing right now. The ones they're doing right now.
And, and so there's a lot to be said for, okay, well, you know, if we can give them a big project, that's fine, but they're, they're doing a lot of little stuff for us for free, too.
To follow up, let me ask a question about what we've done on the others, and I don't know what Jimmy's done, but I did call Joe.
Let's go ahead, though.
Are we ready to vote? I just want to make sure.
Question.
Okay. All those in favor make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes six zero.
To answer, can we answer a question now? I called Joe Haddock after y'all approved the contract last month for the three schools, and told him that once he got those completed, I would like for him to look at our other schools, and I think he may have already looked at Whitehouse, and we've got some issues there with what the boosters have done, and have not, as they, as they are today, may not meet the codes for ADA compliance. And it's just simple stuff that can be fixed very easily. For these other schools, it's going to be more complex, because they're all steep in compliance, and your job's going to be a whole lot easier, because the site was better prepared for that, before you're starting. But you have to have everything on a hard stand, basically, concrete or asphalt, and, you know, I'm sure that's something you're going to get around to, you've got the money to do it. And we're going to look at the other schools, too, after he gets these out, these first three. And again, you know, my idea is that we can do three this year, and maybe three next year, and bring them all into compliance.
And that's what I was, are all of them going to need it?
I think you're going to have issues with every single school, yes.
Some sort, with everything.
I can tell you, I'm not an expert by any stretch of the imagination, but I do know what, what is required for ADA compliance, and I see issues at every school.
I take it you concur, Will?
Yes. Some of them's way less expensive, but Jumpern's High School, baseball fields will be easy peasy, football fields already. So, you know, it's, stuff like that's really going to help in some of them. East Robertson's going to have to have a lot of blacktop around their fields, because there's nowhere to park, and Perky Wilchers, if not.
Anybody else have a question? Okay. Let's move on to our update on building projects.
We're going fast there for a minute.
I love it. Y'all let me go on.
Okay. Rescue Elementary School. There'll be a lot of work going, as Mr. Mike, Mr. Morris told you earlier, next week, we have a few items, punch list items that really need to be taken care of. One is the sodding, that needs to be completed. There's an area of the concrete that they got the wrong finish on, they're going to have to redo it. The trees will not go in until after the first frost, simply because you don't want to dig trees and put them in there to kill them, and several other items that need to be attended to next week. I will tell you that Mrs. Lori Smith is here, I think, she's, she has scheduled a date for our debut of the school, November 3rd, going to have the students participate in that. It's going to be an evening event, and Mr. Smith, do you want to give the time and everything today?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock in the evening on November 3rd, so that'll be after our next board meeting. And we're excited about that. It's, the gym is now in use, everything's in use in the building, and I think they're having a good, great time out there.
Thank you, Stips.
Watauga Elementary, I'll tell you, I've worked with several superintendents and jobs, and I don't think I've ever worked with a better one than Mike Smith, who is the superintendent of that project down there. And I try to visit that at least once a week, and sometimes twice a week. They have the top ceiling tile in, the floor tile in, the building looks almost finished right now. The power, the electricity has to be transferred over to the new transformer, that will happen on Tuesday, and, and the kids will get to go home early for one day. We're going to miss school at 1:00, so that can occur. We cannot leave those kids in the building without power on the building. The cafeteria will not be finished until about mid-November, before Thanksgiving. But everything looks really great, and of course, we've got some additional work to do before they start the demolition. The project is to be completed by next school year, that's what we're shooting for. The contract actually says, I think, August 30th or 31st, but I believe that at the rate they've been working, that we'll get in there in plenty of time to have school next year. We have to move the portals before school starts, Mr. White, so we can't put the road in until we move the portals. So we will have to go somewhere. Central office buildout is going well, we've got the storm drainage in place now, the water is away from the building, none of it is coming up in the upper end of the building, and that's good news. I was going to announce tonight that this may be our last meeting in this facility, but Mr. Morris said, just say "may," because we have to get a certificate of occupancy before we can occupy that building. We're about four weeks away finishing up a few items in the building, but it's really close. I want to commend Mr. James Marshall and his crew for all the good work they've done in putting out our main distribution frame for technology, and that's been a big cost, a lot of work, and our folks did that, we didn't have that as part of the contract, and I appreciate all they did. That pretty much concludes my report on the buildouts. That pretty much concludes my report on the build outs and the construction projects subject to your questions.
Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to our next item, election of school board officers. We'll open the floor for nominations for chairman.
I nominate Connie Hogan to continue for the next year as chairman.
Second.
Okay.
We're getting frosted.
I was just gonna say, were there any other nominations?
Move the nominations to seats.
Okay, well, all those in favor of me remaining chairman, make it known by saying aye. Opposed, no.
Your vote doesn't count.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to vice chairman, nominations, or vice chairman.
I nominate Stony Crockett.
My second.
Okay.
Don't you have a nomination for something?
Any other nominations?
Move the nominations to seats.
Okay, all those in favor of Mr. Stony Crockett being vice chairman, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And we will move on to Tennessee Legislative Network representative, representative. Floor is open for nominations. Anybody wanna jump right on that?
I make a motion, it's allowed, continue with that, Jeff.
I nominate, make a motion, nomination seats.
Those in favor of, while paying the Tennessee Legislative Network representative, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Okay, we're, man, we're moving right on. We are ready for the director's report.
Okay, I reported on the build out and all of the construction projects, but one big thing that all of the young people are looking forward to, and the teachers and staff, and I think, I don't know about them, but I feel like we need it, and that's fall break next week. Of course, Columbus Day is on Monday and then we'll be out the remainder of the week and our support staff as well as our teachers are all looking forward to a little recuperation time. I want to just express our sincere sympathy and to Dr. Locke and his family, his mother-in-law passed away this past week, he's here this evening. I didn't expect you being here, Dr. Locke, but thank you and I'm sorry for the loss. And his daughter, of course, teaches for us over at Springfield High School. We're getting to that stage and Jimmy's anxiously awaiting to pick us over from cooling to heating. And so, while we're off for fall break, some of our maintenance folks and support staff will continue to work and will continue to be doing things in the school system. Subject to your questions, Madam Chairman, that completes my report.
Okay, any questions? We'll move on to comments by board members.
The only thing, we had our board of directors meeting last week and I just wanted to tell you that Tammy was appointed by the governor to serve on the education committee for state education policymaking, which is a great move because then she has an input that also is our input onto any policies that the state board of education makes. And there's seven members of that committee, so that was great news for us as a, as an organization. Also, my last thing is after playing our first six football games away, we'll finally be at home. If, if we can find the stadium, we'll be at home this week for our first home game of the season. So, it's been a long six weeks, but, so.
Does, does anyone have anything to add?
I'd just like, on the benefit of the staff of East Robertson High School, would like to extend an invitation to all board, everyone in central office, anyone, please come out. On October 31st, flower, flowers will be posted and it'll be on the website. They're having their first annual pancake breakfast to help assist in trying to put computers in the high school and the middle school to get prepared to take all these ACT tests and all. I think they're trying to raise somewhere between $40,000 and $50,000. And I won't get on the bandwagon, but we're hitting, we're hitting the same folks that we hit out every year, our parents and our local community, and we're gonna put this money ourselves in. And really, this is education, not a football field. This is education that we're talking about. But please, come out and help us on October 31st, support East Robertson and hopefully we'll have some good eating and keep going from here.
You don't have to have a ticket, right? You just, okay.
No press out. You all, they're, they're putting it together. I just generated a list of people to hit for them.
Mr. Converse.
I just want to, again, get everybody to thinking about somehow trying to form some sort of organization that will submit some plans to, to bring the athletic facilities back under the fold of, back under the umbrella of the school system. And I'm not really sure, it's, it's a big project and I'd have to sit and think about, I guess, how you would, would get to go in the body in an organized way, but I think it needs to happen. And it's gonna take input from the athletic, probably the athletic directors from each of the high schools and maybe the one standalone middle school out in Coop Town, or even middle school athletic directors as well. And I, I think it's a, something that's well worth exploring and I'm not really sure how to get the ball rolling on it. So, any thoughts? Think about some and, and we'll kick it around a little bit more in the, in the near future.
I was just gonna say, I think that's a great idea. And someone mentioned about the booster club and what they have contributed. I think there's a way to help offset that. I've been doing some research with some other school districts that have been through this, and I think there's a way to help them relieve some of that pressure and we're gonna look into it in more detail.
Jeffrey?
Hi, that's what I'm saying.
He's on the, he's quick.
Well, the only thing I want to say, now see, I hear you all elect me chairman and you know that you don't like meetings and I always got meetings for you. But Monday, October the 26th, will be the five-year facilities plan meeting. We're gonna try to start at 4:30. If everybody can't come at 4:30, come when you can. Dinner will be provided. I'm not sure, but it's gonna, I think it's gonna be a meatloaf.
That's pretty good.
So, I knew that would help a little bit. Ms. Mason and I have been working together too to...
October 26th.
26th.
The 26th on Monday, yes.
That's Monday, 1:30.
Ms. Mason and I have been working on the stakeholders' meetings. If you remember when we met with Tammy from TSBA at our, our all-day meeting, we have these stakeholder meetings set up and they will be on October the 29th. You don't have to remember that because you don't have to come. We'll have one with, as a matter of fact, Tammy's words were, it's probably better if board members don't come, because people are, we'll talk more freely and we'll discuss more freely if we're not sitting there listening to them. Anyway, that was just for your information, so, don't come.
Is the, is the facilities, I'm sorry, is the, the meeting on Monday, the 26th, is that for the five-year plan?
Facilities.
Is that here?
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, any other questions? If not, I want to make a motion to adjourn.
Before we, thank you for the last year, I'm glad you're gonna be doing it this year, you did a great job and thank you for all you did. Because a lot of people do not see the other five days in a week that you're here.
I'll back on that. She spends a lot of time. Chairman.
All right, now, we're gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? If all of us in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
It's adjourned.
We'll take care of that.